Item number four is the public hearing for our fiscal year 2020 budget concerning general funds and miscellaneous funds. You're right.
Let me hand these out first. What I recommend that we do tonight is first open the public hearing, and then, once you open the public hearing, I will make a PowerPoint presentation that's on the screen there. And then, city manager and department heads will address questions from the city council. And then, I would recommend city council entertain comments from the general public, and then, close the public hearing. So if you want to open the public hearing, then I will make my presentation.
Okay. We are now open public hearing on our 2020 budget.
What I handed out to you is a copy of this presentation in case any of the documents are hard to read. What I've done on our sales tax revenue, there is 3.75 percent. Of course, the three-quarters percent goes to the CIP fund, so when you're talking about the general fund, I just pulled out the 3 percent that goes to the general fund. So, and we have a full year now, and so, for the current budget year, our sales tax revenue was $5,058,000. And, let's see if I can get this to work.
I got the wings again.
Yeah, it's not advancing.
Are you trying to zoom it?
No, I'm trying to advance and use the pointer. Does it need... This is a different pointer, let me... Or a different mouse. Will the sides advance?
Oh, roll it. I think you should roll it.
Well, that's what I was doing, but...
Do you want to advance a point?
I want point first.
Here comes a help.
Is it not turned on? That might be an issue.
Batteries, that's the problem.
It wasn't turned on. That's what I was...
Oh, FF switch.
Well, I took the wing away.
Now try it. Well, maybe not.
I'll just get Justin to advance it.
You might not be seeing the remote.
That's okay, Aaron. I can work with this. If Justin will just advance it when I'm ready, this will work. Okay. On the, kind of the brown outlined on the left at the bottom, it gives year-to-date total. So, the current year, the sales tax, the 3 percent went to general funds, $5,058,000. If you look at the prior year, which is the yellow, it was $5,422,357. So, sales tax this year as compared to last year was down 6.7 percent, or in dollar amount, it was $363,625 less this year than it was the prior year. I would point out that the FY '18 year, the year before this one, was a very significant year for us in sales tax revenue. If you go back to the '17 year, which is the one on the lower right, you'll see that in '17, we only got $4,977,000 for the whole year. So, the current year is $82,000 or 1 and 1/2 percent above the '17 year, but when you compare it to the year that was an outstanding year, it is down, but it's not like it... The bottoms fell out of the world. It's still more than what we got in '17. If you go to the next slide, Justin. This one is on the city use tax. And again, on the right-hand side, or left-hand side in the brown, if you look at the year-to-date total, $642,325 in revenue. And the year before was $403,546. So, our use tax this year compared to last year is up 59 or almost 60 percent for an increase of $238,778. When you combine those, if you look at the chart on the lower right, and you look at sales tax, the 3 percent that goes in the general fund, and then, the use tax through Last year, our total was $5,825. This year, it's 5.7. So, combined the difference, we're down $124,000 or 2 percent. So, if you just look at sales tax, we're down 6 percent, almost 7, but when you look at combining the amount of use tax with the sales tax, our revenue's only down 2 percent.
Why do you think we're down the sales tax?
If we could go to the next slide, I think we'll explain part of it. This is through 11 months, but if you look at the motel tax, if you compare this year's motel tax to last year, motel tax is down 13 percent or $30,000. And I think the petroleum industry has moved west. And in 2018, we had a lot of crude oil workers at motels that were spending money in town. This is not the only answer, but I think it is a significant part of the answer when the crude oil industry went west.
Well, and you did see Halliburton all over Walmart and Cash Saver everywhere else.
When you look at some of our big sales tax generators, they're up this year. So, we'll have to do some more analysis, but I think if you look at the motel tax, it gives you some indicator of why sales tax is down. Okay? If you go to the next one. This one is a fund balance. When you look at the budget, our budgets can budget part of the fund balance, but what's not budgeted is sitting there. And when you look at the budget, you don't really see how much money's sitting there. So, I wanted to provide you the amount of money that is in reserve or in fund balances that is not budgeted. And if you look at the left-hand column in FY 2019, to start the year on October 1st of 2018, our current year, general fund had $1,248,000 balance that was unbudgeted. If you go down there, the three lines down, the Gov... Three Public Works Authority had $1.4 million. Our sinking fund, or stabilization fund, I mean, for general fund, had $900,000 stabilization or rainy day fund, whichever you prefer to call it, $659,000 for Public Works Authority. But we had a balance of $7,750,000 in cash for the city.
Starting.
Starting. Okay? Now, general fund, you can use for anything. All these other funds are restricted funds that can only be used for specific purposes. So then, the next column over, you can see our estimated beginning balance that we think we will have on October 1 of this year when we start FY '20. And you'll notice that the general fund, even though we have a downturn in sales tax and then you combine with use tax, is still 2 percent down because we had so many vacant positions, our balance is going to be $1.6 million. So, our actual fund balance went up. If you look at all those together, between October 1 of '18 and October '19, starting the new year in October, we'll have $8.7 million if you round it off compared to $7.7. So, our financial position has improved. And then, if you look at the general fund and come on across, you'll see that our revenue, $2.3 million, this is the top line going across, and our expenditures are $12.5. We're projecting that we will be spending more money than we're taking in, about $198,000. So, our ending budget we're projecting for FY '20 on September 30th of next year is $1,444,000, which is still almost $200,000 more than we started with last year.
Are you calling the general stabilization fund, the rainy day fund?
Correct.
Okay.
And so, if you look at the general fund's stabilization fund, which is commonly referred to as a rainy day fund, will be over $1 million at the end of this next budget year. And the stabilization fund for Public Works Authority will be at $875,000.
So, we made an ordinance at one point, I think, that to have it to $1 million.
Correct.
What happens then? Do we keep... Do we stop putting in there and start putting to the GPWA grant day?
That will be a decision made by the city council. Of course, we had to get there first before we worried about that.
Right. That's going to be a good thing.
We're not in one of the funds.
Right, but that's good.
And what we will do is probably start diverting money towards the wastewater treatment plant project. And you will notice that about halfway down, and I don't have a pointer, but there is a wastewater treatment plant fund, and we determined, you'll see $0, the only one is those zero. And, well, we decided during that budget year, we would start setting aside money for the wastewater treatment plant. And so, during this year and again, next year, by setting aside, we will have $1.2 million in that fund to go towards the wastewater treatment plant. So, not only are we positioning our cash flow so that we can make the minimum payments, we are setting aside that cash flow as we develop it each year so that we have that fund, that money to go towards it.
So, we'll start on October with $600,000 in that fund.
Correct.
And one could argue that that's one of the reasons we're over on our expenditures for the year because we haven't historically put that money aside.
We have... We have tended in the past few years to supplement the general fund from the Public Works Authority to make up the difference. We're trying to wean ourselves from that and take less from the Public Works Authority because of all the demands on the Public Works Authority that we have with utility lines, the wastewater treatment plant, we're trying to get away from leaning on it to support the general fund.
I guess what I'm saying is, had we not put that money in there for the wastewater treatment plant, we'd have been over our expenditures for 2020 is what I was saying.
Our revenue would have been over. But I would point out, it's my understanding, if you look at the general fund, at the end of 2020, we will have $1.4 million.
There you go.
The FY '17 budget year, which wasn't that far off, you started the year with a balance of $300,000. So, the city's financial position is becoming stronger. And you will have $9 million total of fund balance on hand at the end of the year. If we could go to the next slide. This is the summary of the general fund. And if you look at the first column that I have marked, the FY '19 budget, you'll see total expenditures, we budgeted $12,925,000. If you go on across, this year, we are budgeting $12,534,000 in expenditures. That's a decrease from the budget in 2019 to 2020 of $391,000 or 3 percent. So, we've reduced our budget from last year to this year's budget by 3 percent. Our revenue only went down 2 percent. Now, part of that, we have reduced overtime, we've reduced our margin of error in some things. So, if we have a... It comes down to a level of trust on department heads and managers. Most cities, they budget more revenue than they know they will use because in overtime, if you have a major event, we have a big storm go through, that money's there in case you need it. But you don't always spend all your money. But I don't know that that level of trust doesn't seem to be there today with all of our city council members. So, we've trimmed that. If we have a major event, we may have to come back and amend our budget and move some money from the fund balance to do that, but it would be subject to something like a major event happening. The fund balance at the end of this year will be $1.2 million. The fund balance at the end of next year is budgeted to be $1.4 million. That's a $196,000 dollar increase. Our beginning, or our revenue was $392,000 over expenses. So, for this year, because of all the vacancies, we're using half of that, $198,000, to go into the balance and half of it to fund next year because we're projecting, even though we've reduced the budget, we're still projecting we're going to spend $196,000 more than our revenue. That works short-term. We can't, we can't year in, year out, take from the fund balance to balance our budget and spend money that we don't have in revenue. But this year, we will spend about $200,000 more than revenue, and we will make that up out of fund balance, but I think our fund balance is adequate enough to do that. In our budget, we did the step increases, but there's no cost of living increase. If we were to give cost of living increases this year and spend even more than what we're taking in, if our sales tax doesn't change, then we'd be in even a bigger hole next year because once you give a salary increase, it's there, you don't take it away. We added one position, an accountant. And I would have to say, on background on that, the mayor came to me three, four months ago and said, "What one position could we add that would assist you and give us better administrative situation?" And I told him that an administrative assistant with accounting skills would be what I would add. But I said, "I'm reluctant to do that because sales tax down." Then, when we got into the budget process, Mr. Long and Mr. Channel proposed a similar position, an accountant or administrative assistant. Since three people had supported that, I decided to put it in the budget. We are getting more and more grants, and some of our department heads struggle, not with the day-to-day administration of the grant, but the financial management on the spreadsheets, on managing the funds and make sure that it's accounted for, that we got good documentation, that the money's going where it's supposed to be, it's separated out. That would be a big assistance by having somebody with an accounting background. There could be tasks that this person would be assigned to look at, maybe some internal controls that we might do to better manage our city. This is no reflection, in my mind, on the finance director, Kim Biggs. Over the last seven years, the finance department or utility office has taken on many new assignments without additional staff. They've absorbed payroll, they've absorbed accounts payable and other functions. Well, there's only so much capacity that one department has if you're not adding people. And I think they've reached their capacity. And so, they may have the ability, but I don't think they have the time to do these things. And every department we have has grants. Then, we adjusted some positions to part-time positions and eliminated some positions in public works.
Can we go back?
We can.
Okay. I'll wait for you to finish, then I'll go back to this.
In public works, our starting wage for equipment operators currently is $10.16. By eliminating position and taking one to part-time, we have put in the budget, $13 in our, our public works, equipment operators, both on the Chief Guthrie Public Works Authority and the general fund side, will now start at $12.35 with six months of experience. And obtaining their CDL, they will be at $13 an hour. We can't fill positions in our public works department because we just clearly are not competitive for equipment operators. This is probably not where we need to be, but it's a step in the right direction. Now, I'll stop and answer questions on this page.
So, on the accountant thing, that's how you have it listed as an accountant.
Correct.
But what you just described to me, personally, I would... I find value in an executive administration-type person that has an accounting background. Okay? Not an additional position, but making sure that that existing executive position has those skill sets. And so, that's what I think needs to happen, not a whole new position. We can, we can get out for a lot less than what's budgeted here if you take the, if you take that initial executive assistant's salary and then you, and you add on a significant bump to get that accounting background behind it, then you got something. You don't have to have another whole position to make that happen.
And what I would suggest is, if you all fund this position, your end funds it. The decision to hire staff in what their assignment is, is the city manager's role.
Okay.
So, even if you fund it, it's still the final decision of city manager to fill the position and set the duties of that position. So, just because you budget it, I think, then it will be my job to figure out the best way to structure it for our operation, given the funds, within the funds that you have allowed me in the budget.
Well, then, what I would like to do is have that, have an open discussion on, that's the only funds that are allowed for the administrative assistant. Okay? And the existing funds don't exist anymore. And so, then, you do what you want with it at that point, and you go ahead and hire the proper person that you need for your support team.
We don't have an existing position that you're describing.
You don't have an administrative assistant?
We have an administrative assistant that is more or less, is secretary-type, that provides secretarial support to buildings, code enforcement, city planning, HR, myself.
You don't have it dedicated?
We all share, no, we all share that one person. She multitasks, and she provides administrative support to all those departments, not just dedicated to my needs.
My question is, we just approved, I think, 46 thou... Not an amount, but essentially what we spent last year, $46,000 for someone to do or help prepare for our audits. If we would not have approved that and taken that money and took the money that you also have budgeted for an accountant, we probably could get a CPA that could multitask and do what we need for our taxes or prepare our whatever, not our taxes, but prepare our reports and also financial statements, and also do what you need them to do in addition to. Because I don't know how many hours they're actually working, but by looking at their rate sheets, we're not getting a full-time person out of them by any means.
But don't we have to have an outside?
No, it can be an inside CPA.
If it's on staff, we don't have to have them out there.
Is that right?
But Crawford does give you more than just an accountant, right? They're advising us on the laws.
Yes. And what I would, what I would recommend is, if we hire an accountant, one, we're going to have to see what's available in the labor pool.
Sure.
And I'll give you an example. At a meeting the other day, Oklahoma City said they had 500 vacancies. Midwest City, when they were talking about public works, indicated that 30 percent of their public works department is vacant. So, we're going to have to see what's out there in the labor pool that we can attract. And it's not just pay or our location. There's something like 300,000 vacant jobs in Oklahoma right now. So, first, we're going to have to get this person on board and see what skill sets. And then, we're sitting here a year from now, if we have someone that has a CPA and has the skill sets, then we might talk about, do we need Crawford to same extent? But we're not there yet to make a decision like that. We're at least a year away before we see what we have. Then, we can talk with Crawford's and see if we can do something different.
Anything else on that page?
Yes, sir. The next page is just a summary of the Guthrie Public Works Authority. And you can see our budget for the current year is $8.5 million, or $8,560,000. And next year's budget is $8,481,000. And we're projecting our year-end balance this year at 1.4 and be 1.7. Again, we're trying to accumulate resources to meet the obligations of the Public Works Authority with the highest level being the new wastewater treatment plant, but we also have to upgrade our water tires as well. So, we have a lot of needs, and we're trying... We've got a long ways to go, but we're trying to position ourselves to be in a better financial position to meet the needs of the city in the future. Next slide is just questions. So now, myself and department heads will try to address any specific questions you have on the budget.
Questions from the council.
I'll just make a statement back to the accounting thing. I thought you had a dedicated person for you. I did.
I hide it well, don't I? Yeah. When we went through the... When I came here in 2017 and we did the mid-year budget to make it work, not only did we eliminate several positions, but we created multitasking where...
Right.
A lot of people picked up a lot of tasks. And so, planning department had their own admin assistant. We combined all that into one position. So, my admin assistant provides support to economic development, planning, code enforcement, HR, and myself. So, she's pretty busy.
I would say, in regards to the budget, you said that we could sustain it maybe this year, but we couldn't continue to do that. I just think that's a slippery slope. I don't know why we wouldn't just go ahead and just not do it now.
The reason, I think, you know, I pointed out, if you look at sales tax and the...
The reason I think, you know, I pointed out, if you look at sales tax and the use tax combined, our revenue stream from those two sources is down 2%. We reduced our budget 3%. I think we can look at the future, I think we made a major step this year. I don't know that we can operate in, if we do more reductions and still provide the services that our residents want. I think that if sales tax continues to go down, then we can do that over time. I mean, we're only out of a $1.6 million balance, we're only taking 200,000. You know, I would like to do it over time rather than just, I guess, rip the Band-Aid off all at once and there be unintended consequences where we're not in a good position to provide the services. I think over the next few years, we monitor our financial situation and if we need further reductions, we will continue to reduce our expenditures to get there. I think this is a good first step and still allows us to budget that all the department heads and myself are comfortable with, that we can continue to provide the services that we've been providing. Not trying to be argumentative, but that's how I see it as administrator.
Break.
On the line item in economic development, the professional services went down. Have we changed our contract for professional services support economic development?
That is a fund, we no longer contract out for recruitment of retail. Visiting with the gentleman that we used to, for retail recruitment, he agreed that it's kind of like you, you hire a fishing guide and you go out fishing several trips and you don't catch any fish, you eventually don't use that guy. And it's the same.
I think I know that guy.
It's the same way in economic development. If you look at, at where we're at on retail, we're not in a position right now to go land big things because if you look at our community, we're a town of 12,000. And then 10 miles down the road, you've got a community that is 100,000. Their household income is almost double what our household income is. If you look at poverty rate, the poverty rate's higher. So, a lot of retailers know that if they put something in North Edmund, we're going to go there to shop. And so, we don't really need to have someone, we're paying $30,000 a year to go out recruit when they, the likelihood that they're going to hit a win for us is, is not very good. So we have taken that in-house. The individual still tries to recruit for us when he has an opportunity and pitches this, but he's not getting paid for it with the ideal that if he does land something for us, we will accommodate him or, or reward him in some way, the fact that he brought something to us. And we are actively working at in-house and so we are trying to target, we're working with a retail, not recruiter, but a company that does retail development to try to work with us on a site down at Seward and 35, which we think may be an attractive site, and target some specific businesses, retail businesses that we think might be attractive to that area. So, we're taking a little bit different approach. On the industrial side, of course, we don't have a shovel-ready industrial park, so being in a position to respond to industries is limited. You all at the retreat this year made a commitment to move forward and are 80 acres out by I-35 at the north exit to make it a shovel-ready industrial site. And it will make us more competitive to submit responses to RFPs from industries looking to expand or relocate. So, we're, we're trying to position our better, but we're trying to use our funds as wisely as we can. I hope that was a fair explanation.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions of Leroy on the budget?
Well, of Leroy or of staff?
Either one.
So, I'd like to talk to chief for a little bit on, on the line item up here under police operations, if we could. So, I'm just trying to get, and I've, I've brought, I talked to Leroy already about this and, and we decided it may be best for you to explain. Okay, so, we budgeted last year 1.4 million and then, but we had an actual of 1.1 million, about 300,000 less. And then, but now we're budgeting 1.3 million, about 200,000, 180,000 more, whatever it is. And I'm just curious, did, last year, did operations go okay for 19?
I mean, define okay, are you asking?
I mean, okay.
With all those positions?
Yeah.
Yes, we are shorthanded, we're down five people.
Okay.
And we have been almost two years.
But how did that affect morale and general day-to-day? I'm trying to get my hands around the increase from 1.1 to 1.3 on operations.
I don't, I don't have it in front of me. We finished at 1.1 this year is what you're saying, and we asked for 1.3 next year.
That's our project.
But what we do is we, we, we budget for every position, whether or not it gets filled or not.
Right, but.
And then at the end of the year, whatever's left over goes back into the general fund.
Okay. So, police operations would be police on the street then?
Correct.
Okay, and then the administration would be staff in-house or?
Correct. Administration covers like three employees, communications, obviously covers communications. Operations cover the patrol guys, CID covers all the investigators and SROs cover the story.
And the other thing, you can survive with vacant positions, just like we do in public works. But when you run with that many vacant positions, you get into situations where you have people working additional overtime. And that takes them away from their families, it affects morale, it, you have people that are tired out working the street and that's not in our best interest. When we have major events, it's tough to get people available because of the additional manors. There's a lot of factors that it would not be in our best interest to not fill those positions if we can find people to do it. And so, we want to fill, we think that is the minimum manning for, to provide the services to our community. Yes, you can do it if you have to, if you can't fill those spots, but it's, it's not an ideal situation and it, it is a concern. And that's why we budget for all those positions and that's the difference is if you've got five vacancies, that's, that's a significant amount of money you're not spending, but you need to spend it because you need those people.
Yeah, and I want to be clear, I wasn't trying to knock the operations side of the police department, that's not my intent here. I just wanted to know, how come we were at 1.1 and we're budgeting 1.3, but yet last year we budgeted 1.4, 100,000 less than the 1.3 even? And the question about morale, I asked right up front, you know, how did that affect morale of being down positions to where people just like Leroy said?
They're tired and grumpy.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure. So how do we go from 1.4 then in 19 to 1.3 in 2020? I guess that operation somehow we shaved, I looked at it like we shaved $100,000 off the budget somewhere.
One, one thing I'll tell you is, is the budget is always a fine-tune thing and I cannot tell you exactly why we, we shaved $100,000. But part of the problem is, is that over time, people have been paid out of accounts they shouldn't be paid out of. And so, Kim and I have aggressively the last couple of years tried to get people in the right account, so we have an accurate, an accurate accounting of what the heck is going on. So, like, we, we've had CID people paid out of operations for several years, the investigations people, when we have an, an investigations account for them to be in. It's, it's.
And, and another factor in that is when you have someone that is maxed out in pay who retires, then you have, then you bring somebody in that's at the entry level, there's a pay difference.
Yeah, I get that.
And we've had some retirements. And additionally, when you have retirements, you have to pay them their accumulated sick leave and, and vacation time and comp time. So, so some of that 945,000 was paying the lump sum payments to people retired and then you go to lower salaries on entry if you've got people that are maxed out at top pay retiring. So that's part of the difference there.
So reducing from 1.4 to 9 million to 1.332 million was not by design?
No.
Well, I guess too. I was trying to hope it was. Okay is where I was going with it.
And I, I think, of course, there's some things that you don't control, you know, like the, the health, the health, the health insurance issue, which I think is costing you guys about 25, 27,000 more. And it has throughout all of our salaries, which is of course the major component of, of our budget. And I think I asked you, when we had our preliminary budget, that same question about salaries going up, but also overtime not going down. And you said the same thing, you had people accounted in the wrong departments in the past. So, but I still see that you've got, your salaries gone up, the, the overtime you're, you're showing flatline. But from what, what we're actually spending, we're spending more in salaries, but just a little bit less in overtime. You would think that there would be, as one, as salaries go up, overtime would go down comparably somewhat.
I guess my question too is how likely are we to, I mean, if we look at 17, 18, 19, and then look at 20, at 17, 1.14, 18, 1.19, 19, 1.14. Now 20, we're proposing 1.33. Like, we've made a little bit of a jump there.
Well, we actually reduced 100 grand.
Huh?
We actually reduced 100 grand from.
From what it was. Well, from what we budgeted for last year, yeah. But we're down in sales tax anyway. I mean, thank God they didn't spend it.
Right. Yeah, but on the actual, I see what you're saying, it's all 1.1 across the board.
Yeah, so do, I mean, that 1.33, how many positions does that fill that aren't filled now?
I don't know off the top of my head, we have five openings right now.
Well, see, this is why we may need a workshop, so that we can have this information. I was hoping to be able to glean all of that from tonight.
I don't know what else we can tell you, the workshop, that we haven't already told you.
I, I think another issue that you, you're overlooking with the overtime, that overtime is, is big, and I noticed that myself, it's pretty good size, but the reason he's got big overtime is because he's a short man.
I get, and, yeah, I agree, 100% on that.
Solve that problem, which we can't, apparently.
We can, I mean, it's, it's super easy, all we have to do is hire qualified people.
But you gotta get them, they're not.
Oh, we, we've got applications every day, but it's not.
Everybody's short everywhere.
I mean, we, we, we have standards and, and they either meet them or we don't hire them.
So, I'm just pointing that out, that that's why you're, you're flatlined on the overtime instead of coming down, because you still have that problem of not being staffed as well as you should be.
So, police operations, you have 18 officers, right?
You're, you're looking at it, so you know better than that.
But you only have 13. You're five short.
Yes.
That's significant, that's almost a third.
Yes.
I was just trying to hope for reduction, that's all, that's the reason I wanted to talk about this. I was going to give the kudos on the reduction side because I know some council people look for reductions. And I was thinking that there was a gross reduction there, but it's actually going to be a net gain. At the end of the day, when you hired the five people, you're probably not even going to be able to do it for 200 grand.
No.
That's the problem.
Right.
So that 1.3 is probably going to be the 1.4. That's where I kind of.
Historically, probably not though. If you really look at historically.
Historically, we won't, we won't hit that number.
Yeah, because you won't have the five people.
You won't have the five, but you're going to still pay the overtime.
But you got a budget for it.
Well, you, you paid the same in overtime the previous year, it's 100,000, so we're, I mean, it's nil.
Are we still on the four-day week thing?
14 days a month, seven days every two weeks.
So is that different than we, than it used to be?
It used to be eight-hour shifts, yes, now we're on 12-hour shifts.
That's what I meant, we're at 12-hour shifts now.
But you've been that way for several years.
Yeah, several years.
But do you think that that has led to the gross overtime?
No.
No?
No. With 12 hours, we actually get more coverage than we did with eight. All the guys wanted to go to 10, but that requires a lot more personnel than, than this city could support. 12s was kind of a happy medium where we could, where we could, as administration, we could get covered what we need to get covered while giving the personnel more time off to be with their families.
I get it.
Thanks, chief. Any other questions from the council, to any staff?
I got a question for Leroy. On the, on the unbudgeted fund balances, we talked about this a little bit. I know what they are, but when, what does the city manager, at the end of this, the city manager, and again, it's all trust factor, and I have a tremendous amount of trust personally, you get to, you get to move money around in certain categories without comfortable people?
The scope of the city manager's authority is I can move money that is budgeted within a department. For example, if you have money in salaries and you don't have a position filled and you need some piece of equipment, I can move within a department. I can move money that's been budgeted from one department to another in the same fund. I do not have authority to move money from one fund to another. I can't move money from public works to general fund. So if it's a transfer from one fund to another fund, that has to be approved by the city council. If we take money from the balance, the, of funds and appropriate that balance to use, that has to be approved by the city council. If we get new money, say somebody walks up and gives us $1,000 and we want to spend that, then we have to bring that to city council to add to our budget. So, there's, the only thing city manager could do is transfers within the same department and within the same fund.
So that doesn't fall under unexpended and unencumbered? If I came up and handed you a million dollars, that would be unencumbered and unexpended, right?
It, it would be, but it's not budgeted. You gotta have two things, to spend money, you gotta have budget authority and spending authority. And if it's not budgeted, I can't spend it. So, if somebody gives me $1,000, I gotta do a budget amendment that you all approve to put it into the budget before I can spend it.
Okay.
And that's a little bit of the answer to why the overtime doesn't necessarily go down on, on what the chief was asking for, because if he hadn't budgeted for it and still can't fill those vacancies and all of a sudden has to spend more than, let's say, the 100,000, then he has to come to get approval from you.
Did, did I explain that okay?
Yes, you did.
Any other questions?
Input from the public.
Okay, this is a public meeting and is there anybody in the public domain that would like to make, ask any questions or make any particular comments? It's open in the public, public meeting.
Chris?
Nobody's moving, okay.
Mayor.
Then?
Mayor.
Oh, yes, sir.
Who is the?
Come on up to, you need to come to the microphone, identify yourself and your, your address.
address.
Don't leave that hat back there, we might want to trade.
I'd like to have that hat.
My name is John Balsiger, I live at 1308 Red Canyon Road and, uh, I was just wondering, uh, who our councilman is for that area? And, uh, it seems to me that the street up there has gotten into a ridiculous position. The street just before, um, you get to, um, Canyon Bluff.
I appreciate, I want to cut you off, but, but the, the public hearing is on the budget.
Well, that's part of, going to be part of the budget. Somebody's got to pay for it.
Where is that? Was that on, where is Canyon? Where, where are you talking about?
If you go about a mile north of Noble on Pine Street, it's on the right-hand side and, and-
Ward, Ward 1. That's myself and Jim Case.
Okay.
Mr. Long and-
I was hoping it was mine.
Mr. Case is not here.
Okay, well, I'll talk to Mr. Long then.
Okay.
Maybe we can get some info, because the, the school buses come down that, that road and there's a big hole. It's been closed off, but it's not barricaded or nothing.
On Pine?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the culvert on Pine?
And a bus comes over there with kids in it and they've weighed, it's a weight, lot more, lot more weight on it than what normally is. And they get close to that thing, it's going to bust through. And then there's going to be a heck of a lawsuit, so I think somebody really should be looking into it.
I think it's, it's to be taken care of.
Thank you.
Do you want me to make, um, on the Pine Street culvert that got washed out at the storm, we are working with FEMA and now the Federal Highway Administration to get funding. Well, they will pay 80% of the improvement, but there's a process to go through and we're working with them and our city engineer to get that project done.
And if you start it prior to the approval of that, you don't get it.
You don't get their, their 80%.
It's coming. Thank you, Mr. Balsiger. Anybody else on public, uh, wants to make a comment, please? Okay, hearing none, uh, we will, um-
Close the hearing.
We'll close the public hearing. And, um, I, we'll move to item number five. Discussion possible action for resolution number 2019-15, which is the adoption of the 2020 budget for General Funds, miscellaneous fund.
I want to make a comment, if I could, real quick, that, and we've done some of this in the past, that, because I've spent a lot of time on this budget and I, I think others have as well. And, you know, we can make amendments throughout the process and this budget has to be a working document. This isn't the holy grail. At the end of the day, it has to be a document that could be changed. And, yeah, I think, uh, from my conversations, that staff is willing to make those accommodations and meetings and potential changes for us as a group. Is that correct?
Yes, I think tonight you approved, uh, budget amendment number six, uh, for the current year and this budget, it is a living document. It's not etched in stone and can be amended at any time. And if there's further studies throughout the year and recommendations to amend it, the city council can amend it at any time.
And if I'm not, if I'm understanding things correctly, the expenditures in the proposed budget are down 3%?
Yes.
Yes.
So, obviously, there's been staff work to make that happen and, and-
Well, I think we need to have ongoing meetings to start doing reduction across the board, kind of like James is suggesting there. I don't think that has to happen for the approval of this budget. I think that it has to happen, we can't just let that go away. At some point, we have to start realizing that within a couple of years from now, this particular budget might not even work, um, because of a position that we may find ourselves in, with the kind of monies that we have to spend, uh, on some of these high-end items out there. I'm going to make a motion to approve based on the fact that we'll be able to amend it, is what I'm going to do.
Motion, is there a second?
I would second it and I would say that I would also thank the staff for the hard work they did on this, because it's obvious when you go through it that everybody tried their best to shave. I mean, you don't come up with, uh, a reduced budget without working hard on it. And I know they spent a lot of time, I spent a lot of time just reviewing it, so I appreciate it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. unanimous approval to approve resolution 2019-15, 2020 budget for General Fund and Miscellaneous Fund.